So we'll go in order of seating, starting with Bernice Rivera.
Aye.
Jamaica Miles?
Aye.
Kathy Lewis?
Aye.
Amanda Sponable Pantalon?
Aye.
Nolani Etienne?
Aye.
Vivian Parsons?
Aye.
And Alexandria Carver?
Aye.
By a vote of seven to zero, Bernice Rivera will become the Board President for the 2024-2025 school year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I now open the nominations for the Vice President for the 2024-2025 school year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Nohalani Etienne as Vice President.
Nolani Etienne is the first nomination. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I nominate Vivian Parsons for Vice President.
Any other nominations? I'll close the ballot for the Office of Vice President and we'll proceed to a roll call to be done out, or to be done in order of seating. So the first vote will be for Nohalani, starting with Bernice Rivera.
Yay.
Jamaica Miles?
Yay.
Amanda, or Kathy Lewis, sorry.
Yes.
Amanda Sponable Pantalon?
Nay.
No.
No.
Um, Nolani Etienne?
Yay.
Vivian Parsons?
Nay.
And Alexandria Carver?
Nay.
We will now do the roll call for Vivian Parsons, starting with Bernice Rivera.
Nay.
Jamaica Miles?
Nay.
Kathy Lewis?
Nay.
Amanda Sponable Pantalon?
Yay.
Nolani Etienne?
Nay.
Vivian Parsons?
Yay.
And Alexandria Carver?
Yay.
By a vote of four to three, Nohalani Etienne, sorry, will become the Board Vice President for the 2024-2025 school year. Congratulations. Sorry. One moment. I'll now administer the oath of office to the newly elected President and Vice President. You can raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Bernice Rivera.
Bernice Rivera.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
the Office of School Board President according to the best of my ability.
of the Office of School Board President according to the, to the best of my ability.
So I, Nohalani Etienne, solemnly swear.
I, Nohalani Etienne, solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
the Office of School Board President according to, School Board Vice President, sorry, according to the best of my ability.
the Office of School Board Vice President according to the best of my ability.
I'll now turn over the proceedings of this meeting to Bernice Rivera, School Board President.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Board Clerk Michelle. The annual reorganizational meeting is a kickoff meeting for a board's new year. Among other things, board members are sworn in, as Board Clerk Michelle just did. A board president and a vice president are elected, and other district officers are appointed for the upcoming year. We will be, we will be presented with several resolutions ranging from annual authorizations to establishing standard workdays for certain titles. In all school districts, except for nine common school districts, school boards are required to hold an annual reorganizational meeting. Most districts hold their annual organizational meetings during the first or second week in July. We will move forward to vote on the resolutions. So Resolutions 3A through 3BB for the annual appointments. I'll accept a motion to approve these resolutions. May I have a motion?
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, VP Nohalani. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the annual appointments carries. Resolutions 4A through 4R for annual authorizations. These concern payroll, certification, check signatories, et cetera. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Nohalani. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Any discussion, all, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the annual authorization carries. Resolutions 5A and 5B designating the official legal paper and official dispositories for the district. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved, Kathy.
Uh, thank you, Board Member Kathy, and second, thank you, Board Member Alexandria. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the annual designations carries miscellaneous rates. Resolution six approving miscellaneous rates for certain positions not authori-, otherwise specified in a current collective bargaining agreement with the Schenectady City School District. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to accept the miscellaneous rates carries. Resolution seven, approving standard workdays for certain titles. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept establishing standard workdays for certain titles carries. We will now adjourn the reorganizational meeting. Good evening, we're back. At this time, I would like to call the July tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Board of Education to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the July tenth, twenty twenty-four agenda presented before us this evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Alexandra. Any discussion, additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the July tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting agenda carries. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes. The minutes for the BOE meeting on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to accept the June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four board meeting minutes carries. At this time, I will turn it over to public comments. Thank you. Before we begin our public comments, I will make a little statement, okay? Good evening, community members, staff members. We are about to convene in the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your comments, concerns, and questions seriously, and want to have sufficient time to process and research is, issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting, or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly, rather than the audience, and then the board will now welcome public comments. Um, you will have three minutes. You're welcome. Good evening.
Do I need the microphone?
Yeah, yeah, you do. Is that? No, not yet. Good? Okay.
I apologize, I had eye surgery, so I have to be up close to my paper.
No, it's okay. I don't think we can hear you.
Can you hear? It's on.
It's on? On, hello?
There you go.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. In stereo.
In stereo, but I have to keep this close. Again, I apologize. That's okay.
Good evening, Board Members. Dr. Koto, my name is Valerie Smith. After twenty-four years with the district, I am resigning. I do not have another job. I am not retiring. I am leaving because I have the power to choose how I want to be treated. Over the past two years, I have truly enjoyed my job as Assistant Director for K-12 Social Studies and Civic Readiness. I love working with the other ADs in the OTL Department, Dave Kriegen, our project manager extraordinaire, and Carmela Parenti, who has taught me a great deal about myself. But even the strength of the village within which I work could not shield me from two years of negativity, from someone in a position to model leadership, support growth, and do better. I thought I made the right people aware of what was happening. They listened with concerned voices and said, "We don't want you to leave. How can we fix this?" And I had hoped something would be done in our trauma-sensitive district. My resignation letter was met with, "We respect your decision and will miss you," but still no support was offered. I hope my longevity in the district speaks to the fact that I do not run when the going gets tough, but my mental health is my priority and I must take care of it. Leaving Schenectady is truly one of the saddest days of my life. I taught amazing kids. I put my entire soul into creating the early college high school program in 2010, and had the privilege of working with people who put all of their hearts into caring for our kids. Rosa Parks is quoted as saying, "One person can change the world." It's true for me, and I will forever wonder how I was not strong enough to persevere for the sake of the students, staff, and my coworkers, although I will always hope to return to Schenectady, the place I love. But for now, what I needed was support and to know it mattered. Climate and culture does not just apply to the students. It should apply to everyone in our district, and it's a sad day for me. But thank you for your time and for listening. I had to share my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you. And we will continue with comments from Superintendent Koto.
So good evening, Board of Education, faculty, staff, and community. Before I get started, I want to welcome Alexandria Carver to our team and looking forward to the work ahead. I want to utilize our president's word "amazing" to kind of speak to graduation. And the graduation event as a whole, as I use that word quite a bit as well, but was amazing. And I can really just want to shout out to Dennis Green and his team at the high school, his administration, his teachers, his staff, I mean, all of them took a, played a key role in the success of, of the graduation. Along with that, Jeff Russo and our SOO team in doing all of what they could do to support our families as they celebrated their children, and with that comes a lot of excitement and individuals wanting to get up to that stage. But, you know, his team worked well with just supporting them and encouraging them and giving them the guidance that they needed in order to, to have, to have them enjoy that moment. And then Brian Dangler and the, um, facilities and grounds, they did an amazing job getting us ready for that particular day, along with all other members. I mean, it truly took a team to kind of make that happen. And then along with that, all of the moving up ceremonies, I know for next year, we'll, we'll figure out a way to put those on a, on a schedule so that we're all aware, but from a pre-K moving up to a kindergarten moving up to then fifth grade and then high school, had the opportunity. So I mean, just commending our building leaders across the district and the support that they provided, acknowledging those, you know, key moments in, in a family's life. I also want to just share that summer enrichment program is underway, and we're off to a great start. I'm looking forward to get out within the next couple of weeks to, to visit all of our sites. I also want to kind of share that our gear up, gear up team is offering support for incoming ninth graders and their parents. They're providing tutoring, mentoring, social, emotional support, opportunities to connect, supports and resources for parents so that they best, they can best support their students. This information is on our website, along with the registration form. I want to provide a reminder that summer meal programs, including Farm to Family, is underway. Free meals are available every day for kids under the age of eighteen. The sites and the schedules are posted on our website, along with the Farm to Family Wheel schedule. I just want to give a shout out to the Shades of Sisterhood team. Spectrum News recently did a feature on the team, and some students spoke about how the program provided support to them and has already made a difference in their lives. We shared the stories out on our website and social media feeds. Our safety plan will be posted, um, starting on July fifteenth, and will be open for public comment through August fifteenth. We have a few job fairs coming up in July and August. The paraprofessional job fair will be held July eighteenth, and the safety job fair will be held on August sixth. We will be sharing the new student orientation schedule for each of our schools in the next, in the next few weeks. Everyone is invited to attend the Activated Artists Fest on August tenth in Schenectady High School. The fest is showcasing, showcases all of our local artists and works that blends creativity with social change. It includes dance, visual arts, theater, film, and spoken word. And last, Ellis is hosting their annual back-to-school vaccination clinic on August fifteenth, on August thirteenth and fifteenth, from four-thirty to eight-thirty at the Family Health Center on McClellan Street. The information is on our website. They're asking families to schedule their appointments. The 2024-25 vaccination requirements have also been updated and are also on our website. With that, with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Board President.
Thank you, Superintendent Koto. We will now continue with board members, and they have an opportunity to share comments about district and community events, school liaison updates, and/or agenda items. We will begin our board comments with Student Board Representative Joyce.
Good evening. As the student representative, I would like to share the Schenectady School District Safety Survey will open July fifteenth through August fifteen on the safety of our, the schools in our districts. In addition, I would like to share on the Leadership in Education event, July nineteenth and twentieth. Schenectady and Naskiono will be partnering to emphasize the importance of student representatives in school district board educations to schools that do not have student leaders.
Thank you. Thank you, Student Board Representative Joyce, and we will continue with Alexandria, then Kathy.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to give a heartfelt thank you, thank you to the community and all those persons who made it to the polls. I consider it a high honor to sit in this capacity and serve amongst Dr. Koto and you, Madam President, and the remainder of the board members. I am looking forward to building on the momentum and continuing the great work that the board, um, has ahead. Secondly, I had an opportunity to participate in a school district initiative, which was the Farm to Schools on Wheels, as they kicked off last week, and I was thoroughly impressed. I was able to obtain fresh, fresh produce, items that are staples in my family. Collard greens, eggplants, broccoli, cauliflower, green beans, snap beans, local honey, cucumbers, zucchini, potatoes, the list went on. So it was exciting to see that the school district has these opportunities in place to help our families that are suffering from food disparities and inequities. So kudos to the school district, and if you have not, you should follow them on their social media page for their pop-up spot. It was a great experience.
Thank you, Board Member Alexandria, and Board Member Kathy, and then Board Member Amanda.
The, um, graduation was, was terrific, and I want to commend everyone who, who put that together and, uh, and how it, how it came about, and, um, thank the heavens above that it didn't rain that evening. And, uh, and so on. So I hope everything is going well with the summer school and the summer lunch program, and it's indicated that that's been doing well, and, uh, that people are, are staying cool in these schools. So, uh, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Kathy.
I just want to say welcome Alexandria officially, and other than that, no.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda, and we will continue with Board Member Vivy, or Jamaica, then Board Member Vivian.
Hey, y'all. Um, the, the thing that I, that I always say, and it's not going to change, um, I, I know what it takes for folks to, to come and speak publicly at our events, and so always appreciative of anyone that speaks for any reason, um, to, to get up and share with us. And also, welcome Alexandria. Welcome to the team, girl. Glad to have you here. Appreciate that I get to spend a second term, um, here doing this work, because it is work. And it's important work for our students and our, our families, um, and, and glad that the, the voters decided that I was worthy to, to hold this seat a second term unapologetically. We are into the summer, and the Summer Enrichment and Extended Year Program, um, because those are two separate things, and hopefully parents are aware of both of them for those that need it, uh, because we do still find that parents don't have all the information they need about the programs that we have, so we'll work with that. I want to talk a little bit quickly about, um, the, the food, because Rebecca Henriksen, before we had anything else, we only had a very, we had little gardens. There were little gardens that our kids were putting in different schools, and they weren't at every school. I believe we're at every school right now. We're close to every school. We're going to be at every school, um, with our initiative, and Rebecca has spearheaded it from the beginning and really appreciate her. Also part of our summer enrichment, our kids don't just swim at the brand-new pool that we got here in Schenectady, but they have lifeguard training, y'all. And so this is something that allows them to learn not just how to swim, but to be lifeguards, and then can become lifeguards, have paid positions at our wonderful new pool, so very exciting. Um, and lastly, the, the graduation meant a, a lot to, to everybody. For some of us, it, it touches us in different ways. Not everyone knows, I didn't graduate from high school. I got my GED, and back then, uh, you didn't get to walk across the stage, and we do that now. We make sure that GED candidates walk across the stage. Also, when, um, our guest speaker Trent Griffin Braff and I were, were coming up here in Schenectady, we were not candidates that you would expect to be representing our city the way that we do, um, and it warmed my heart to know that we could have him standing there and speaking to those young people, um, and for them to be so reflected in the people that they see every single day, um, giving them words of encouragement, letting them know that their life's experiences are not something that will hold them back, but give them opportunity to learn and to continue to move forward, that their future is bright. So it, it meant a lot to be able to sit on that stage and listen to, to Trent, um, and to be visualizing all of those beautiful faces.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, and Board Member Vivian.
Good evening. First, um, welcome, Board Member Alexandria. We are very excited to have you. VP Nohalani, again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to congratulate again the class, the graduating class of 2024. I was so thrilled and excited to see all of the creativity with their caps and their gowns, and the excitement, the tears, the hugs, just the relief that you accomplished what you worked so hard to accomplish. So again, congratulations, and I wish and pray for nothing but success for each and every graduate that we had this year, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian, and Vice President Nohalani.
Good evening. So, um, most everything, again, has been said, but I have to say, welcome Alexandria. Really glad to have you here. Um, looking forward to doing the work. I'm sure, you know, you'll fit right in and join right in. Um, get ready, it's going to be a blast. And welcome back, Board Member Jamaica. Um, congratulations on being re-elected for a second term. Similarly, like what everyone had said, graduation, this is my favorite time of year. I was actually going to expound on, I didn't know Vivian was going to do it, but the dance moves, um, the shoes, um, on some of the, the kids and things like that, like, just, I just love it. I love it. I love the different styles. I love the excitement, like everyone says. So congratulations to the class of 2024. You know, again, just to also echo what, uh, Board Member Jamaica had said, Trent Griffin Braff, just, I, I kind of had chills listening to him speak, and I think that that's critical just to see how people are able to, um, propel themselves to move forward, to change their circumstances, and, um, you know, I just, I thought that that was just a really, really great message, um, you know, just really pushing that resilience and pushing, um, you know, that you can ultimately, you know, become, you know, what you want. You have to put that work in and that sort of thing. So all of the graduates, I know that that's what they did. I'm proud of, um, our district, and I, that's all I have.
Thank you, VP. Congratulations, Alexandra and Jamaica. I know you've heard me say this quite often to both of you. Welcome. You have joined a great team with strong, strong, um, opinions in a good way, where we can really dialogue about tough issues in a really respectful manner, and I think you will enjoy the ride. It is going to be a very good ride, and I really, I'm, I'm so proud to be on this board, because again, we've done a lot of great work in the last few years. So welcome.
Thank you.
And Board Member Jamaica, you're back. So again, congratulations. You have built this, you have been part of this team, and it's, I think, again, it's been a good team with all of us. We've had our ups and downs, different discussions, but it's a good thing. That's how we get to good solutions and good work in our district. So thank you. I do want to mention the graduation too, because what I love about it, and it brings me to what Student Representative Joyce had talked about, it was led by students, the majority of the graduation. The speakers, in addition to the great speakers that we had, that, um, we mentioned, the, m- most of our students that were on stage spoke, and they were awesome. We were led with the procession by our students. The performances were all our students. Every year, what I've noticed is that it's more student-led, and the voice can be in, in a variety of ways. It doesn't literally have to be a voice. It could be showing who you are and what you can do in a multiple, multiple ways, and I think that really happened at the, um, at the graduation. In addition to all the thank yous that everyone said, I do want to really thank the folks that set up all those seats on the turf. That's a, I mean, I think about it, all of you, seriously. I mean, there was, because I know, um, Deputy Superintendent, or Deputy Superintendent DiCaprio said there was about five thousand people there. It was a lot of people, and someone had to set that up for everyone. Someone had to organize how to get people, because they had the little caddies. We had the caddies for folks who may not be able to kind of move around as easily. We had the caddies all there. We had so many safety officers helping people. So I do want to, because everyone mentioned the thank yous, I'd want to mention behind the scenes, because nothing can happen without our custodial staff and all of our, our employees, our professionals that are doing this work, so it could be such an amazing event that we all mentioned. So thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I will pause there, but it's great to see everyone, and we're starting the new year, kicking it off, all right? So thank you. So we will continue, and we will move on to our consent agenda items. The next order of business are the consent agenda items. The consent agenda includes items to be approved by consent and were previously sent to the board for review. However, single items can be considered separately and taken off the consent agenda by a single member. Does anyone wish to take an agenda off of the list?
I would, I would like to make one correction on one of the items, so I would take it off the con, uh, Code of Conduct, uh, Character Conduct and Support.
And what's the correction? And what's the correction?
It's pretty simple, actually. I'm looking at page 19 of it, and I don't see Fulton's contact information as opposed to Van Corlees'. I think, I mean, we still have Van Corlees there. We don't have Fulton. And since it's for 2425.
So we will still vote on the Consent Agenda items with that correction? So I'll accept a motion to accept numbers four through nine E, again with the correction of the Code of Conduct on page 19 to include Fulton School. I'll accept a motion to approve these items. May I have a motion? Okay, Board Member Cathy, thank you, and VP, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept Resolutions four through nine E with the correction of the Code of Conduct on page 19, including Fulton carries. At this time, we will have a Strategic Plan presentation from Superintendent Kodo. I just want to mention a few things. As members of the Board of Education, it is both our privilege and responsibility to ensure that our students receive the best education possible. Today, our superintendent will walk us through the Strategic Plan, sharing new learnings and recommendations that will shape and support our district in growth and excellence. We will have an opportunity tonight to ask questions, share comments, and the board, community, and staff will have another opportunity to chime in at the next board meeting on June 24th. But meanwhile, comments and/or questions can also be sent via Let's Talk. On August 14th, we will have a resolution to vote for the Strategic Plan. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Kodo to present the Strategic Plan.
Good evening, board, faculty, staff, and community. I am going to share this presentation with Dr. DiCaprio, so I'll start off, and then we'll kind of tag-team the slides. But just to give some context, I mean, this is the first time that we're bringing this particular information to the community, as well as to the board and to staff. So just to kind of share, this particular, our Strategic Plan has been active since 2019. And I think as Mr. Soler came in as superintendent and reviewed in the community, there's a lot of buy-in from the community in reference to our four pillars. And he made the decision along with the board to move forward with this particular plan. As I've transitioned into this role and engaging in the community, the community is still in support of the Strategic Plan. So we want to kind of share where we are, provide some context on where we're going. We've continued to kind of seek feedback from our community, and we'll do that throughout this process. So it's technically a draft, but the tweaks that we'll make within this draft will not move away from the foundation of where we are as it relates to our four pillars, our overall mission, vision, and goals. And, but I want to truly thank the community, because I'll share a little in reference to where we've been as far as our stakeholder engagement. Prior to this, I was the Assistant Superintendent, and I was charged with doing the listening and learning. I did that from November through January. And I want to thank the board members that had the opportunity to kind of participate, as well as ELT members and then staff. We did have staff in those kind of conversations. We had a minimum of eight. I will update this as it relates to some of the conversations and listening opportunities that we provided to our Latino families. Alex Torres played a key role. And, you know, we probably had over 30. I know Bernice was in that space as well with me. So we will create that update as it relates to that. But we're also making sure that we get out to all of our families and make sure that we have translators to continue to engage the community on where they want us to be as it relates to where we are. I had an opportunity as I transitioned into role to meet with our building leaders, as well as our ELT, and then also members of the building. And that's information that continues to just evolve over time, and that's where you'll see some updates to this particular work. But along with that, there was a survey that went out prior to the shift, and that survey had over 275 participants. And within that, probably the largest, as I'm told, in the district's history as it relates to families and school, I mean, that's not only family, but also staff and students, providing some context around where we are and where they'd like us to be. We've quoted some things as it relates to the individuals within. I mean, and there's a lot of quotes, so we just kind of captured three of them here. One for a parent who's been in the district for over 15 years, was the primary focus of the district's Strategic Plan, should be on improving the quality of education, ensuring that students are learning in a safe and supportive environment. We had a teacher of three years finding alternatives to suspension, respite programs, and alternative placement options for students unable to learn in their current classroom setting. And then from a student who's been with us for five years, we want our classes to be fun and to teach us the things we need to know and to succeed in jobs when we graduate. As it relates to the survey, you know, these were the five stakeholder priorities, safety being number one. And we are, you know, many of the things that I share, we're working on as we speak in reference to our ELT, as well as community as well. But that was the highest in reference to a priority. The second was programs and services, wide ranges of learners, so making sure that we're providing a wide range of opportunities and experience for our students. Rigorous curriculum, which we've seen a lot of that kind of evolving in our Department of Teaching and Learning. High-quality teachers, HR has been working hard in recruitment and seeking diverse educators to join us here in Schenectady. And then the positive school culture and climate, which is something that's evolved quite a bit in my listening tour as I continue that work. Student voice is something that we've anchored very strongly on this particular year. I mean, in every year, but as I transition into this role. And what's been unique, you know, I'll share this particular piece, but we did have a teacher here at Mount Pleasant who had students write me letters. And while I was on vacation, I read all those letters, and they had a strong focus. These were middle schoolers, so their focus was around lunch and recess. And they pulled research to kind of let me know the importance of social, emotional well-being, and how important it is for us to just have 15 minutes to get this energy out so that we can focus in the classroom. Shared the cultural differences of food and making sure that we're providing a variety of those differences. And I know that we'll have Elaine coming, you know, probably at our next meeting to kind of share some of what we've been doing within Food Services. But very thoughtful letters. And we will, you know, we'll take all those things into consideration as we move forward. But what they shared, as, you know, as things that are going well, are that they appreciate the organizational structures of the classes, the support they receive from teachers, and the opportunities for creativity. They value the balance of thought-provoking curriculum that encourages critical thinking and teachers meeting them where they are. Additionally, students spoke to how important activities that support their mental and social well-being are provided for them. And these quotes kind of align to that particular statement that I just shared. But the things that they want us to focus on is highlighting better communication between staff and students. Students also spoke on the importance of more one-on-one classroom instruction and a slower pace to the teaching that allows for more intentional engagement. Additionally, students wanted more holistic approaches to education, focusing on collaboration, improving class quality, and creating supportive learning environments. And again, there's a lot of information that was shared as it relates to them reflecting. But these are the voices of our scholars. I'm going to turn it over to Joe, who will speak to just the foundation of where we are as it relates to our pillars, and then speak to two of our pillars.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kodo. Can you guys hear me? All right. Congrats, Alexandria, Jamaica, Bernice, Nohalani. Congratulations. All right. Dr. Kodo thinks turning it over to me. So as we engage in these updates around our next Strategic Plan, the four pillars remain the same. That is the strong foundation. So we talk about student and graduate success. We talk about passionate people. We talk about partnerships with our family and community. And then lastly, our efficient systems and equitable resources. The goals and the pillars are in alignment. It's important because since 2019, while the Strategic Plan was adopted then, the work to build that plan in 2019 actually began in about 2016. And we really saw that when Annabelle came in and now Dr. Kodo took over, we saw that back in 2021 and didn't want to change that. What we wanted to do was grow and accelerate it without changing the pillars. So that's the strong foundation piece that I can't emphasize enough. Dr. Kodo and I look to continue to make those pillars as strong as can be, as clear as can be, and above all else, as connected through the lens of equity that we can be, while still accessing and elevating voice. Voice from our students, voice from our community, and voice from our faculty and staff. So that's where the goals and the pillars align. Next slide. Thank you. This was the framework that we followed in the development process. And this actually was the process that was engaged before Dr. Kodo, Annabelle, myself, our executive leadership team. So kudos to the teams before us, to the leadership before us, to the Board of Education before us. They saw something. This district is historically strong and resilient and skilled. And we saw that and recognized that as a new leadership team and have chosen to continue to stay the path, while still recognizing even good can be great and great can be excellent. And that's where this goes, and that's where the development process, you'll see that assessment piece, setting your goals, and then identifying how we get to those goals, followed by that framework from vision to our next set of goals for 2030. Next slide, Carl. Thank you. So when we look at the pillars with greater specificity, the first pillar, student and graduate success, is broken down into three areas, quality instruction and academic engagement. That remains above all else the top priority for all of our children. That is our job as a district to make sure they are held to the highest instructional expectations, and we provide them every support they need to help them get there. But it's not done on guesswork. It's not done on what we think or maybe suspect the child might need. It's done based off data. It's data-driven decision-making around all pathways. And knowing that data comes from different areas, it's not just a number. It could be a voice. It could be a picture. It could be even a setting. And quantifying that data is huge. And that's where we're right at now as far as action steps to move the work from our previous Strategic Plan to what you'll see in this one. And then lastly, embedding career pathways, readiness to enter the career world beyond just a college experience. What does it look like when you talk about career post-high school? And I'm proud to say, this district offers those options already when you're entering high school. It's incredible between SUNY Schenectady's partnership, I can't even get into the relationships that we've built within our own community that have grown these opportunities beyond just that four-year college path. It's amazing. So those three things make up this student and graduate success. So to exemplify one area that you'll see following this summer that will be new is our district's first-ever District Data Committee. Under the leadership of Mr. Tyrone Omeley, our Executive Director of Schools, Planning, and Accountability, he will initiate a makeup of district employees, community members, and students that will be charged with leading all of the district components that define data. So our systems, from our student management system to Infinite Campus, to how we adjust our practice to align with our grading policy. There are some systems we've used that we've just always used. But now that we have this grading policy rooted in equity, some of those systems need to be changed to make sure our practice aligns with that policy. Because at the end of the day, it helps our students. So that will be what's to come in the very, very near future as Mr. Omeley leads the development, creation, and implementation of that committee. So I just want to give you one example in that pillar. Our next pillar is passionate people. We are made up of incredibly skilled faculty and staff across all entities that make up our organization. We know our children are the best. We know our kids need every ounce of love, support, and skill we can give them, which means we need the right people in those positions to provide that care for our children in the classroom and outside the classroom. So under the direction of Shana Tahoe, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Professional Learning, we continue to put ourselves as a district in places where we are recruiting talent, diversity, and just above all else, a passion for urban education. It's got to come from your heart, because when it comes from your heart, children feel it. They know it's not phony. They know it's not fake. They know you have their back through thick and thin. And that's where that recruitment continues to happen without hesitation. Now we shift to retention. We've got you. How can we make you feel valued? How can we make you feel appreciated? And how can we make you better? Because if we make you better, you make us better. So that sort of systematic efficacy that the return on investment into the employee, it's bought back through what they give to our children. So we continue to engage in improvements in that kind of department and just step to growth as a district and a system. Lastly, professional learning and career growth. We have one new item on it that falls in this pillar. Under Shana Tahoe's leadership, we've now engaged in new orientation events this summer. They happen this summer. Actually, I think one happens next Friday, where as you get onboarded as a new employee across all our divisions, paraprofessionals, custodians, secretaries, administrators, teachers, you'll have a chance to be orientated to the, it's a deep system with lots of names and titles and just pathways and processes you have to follow that sometimes you just need help. So to have that opportunity to be onboarded, welcome a new, given this information without having to find it yourself, is something that starts this summer, and then will carry that on throughout the summer, knowing that some people come, leave, some people come stay, some people come, leave, come back. So we want to make sure those systems move with that movement and are offered as consistent state, kind of pieces to the district. So those are the two specific, there's a little more specific items to those two pillars, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Kodo, who will take you through the last two.
Just to also highlight within our four pillars, the goals. We were intentional around the Schenectady Equity Goals throughout all of the four pillars. So when we look at student and graduate success, is increasing access to advanced studies, study opportunities historically for the underrepresented population of students that we serve. Along with that, I mean, it's again, increasing ELA proficiencies. Many of these things are in our DCEP and other kind of data points. But I think as Joe shared, we are looking, and our goal is to create a dashboard that provides an outward-facing snapshot of not only our students, but how we support them. And this team that we're putting together is instrumental in the fact that we're making sure that we have everyone sitting at that table. So I think as this goes out to our community, please, through Let's Talk, share. If you have thoughts and ideas even on what we've got here posted, we can make those adjustments. So we just want to continue to seek that feedback from our community. When we look at the passionate people, I think, you know, Joe did share, but it's increasing the employment, the overall diversity of our employment, employees within the district. And we've done some of that. We're growing our own, you know, as you see even in some of our hiring. It's individuals that are currently in positions that are being elevated into other positions. We're tapping individuals, and we're creating systems to really empower and make them know that we do value them, and we're looking to see them grow within our organization. So from SSOs to parent liaisons to paraprofessionals, as we see. And I think Summer Enrichment has played a key role in that, and after-school programming, where individuals have taken on the opportunity to be in a classroom, and then all of a sudden get the spark of, I want to go into education. How can I do that? Some of them not necessarily going into the classroom, but social work, psychologists, counselors, are some of the kind of areas that individuals have shown interest. When we look at the partnerships with family and community, this was a pillar that I led prior to. And I think here, we want to just continue to provide high-quality extended learning programs. What's been interesting as we've transitioned into this summer is that growth. You know, we've got a large number of district leaders, not only at the district level, but the building level, that have shown interest in now participating. So it's a good problem to have. And with that, we can continue to find ways to support and make sure that we can provide that access across all of our buildings. And we will look to do that as we transition into this particular school year. We are currently going through an RFP process to identify not only our local partners, like the Boys and Girls Club, but also external partners to support us in these efforts. Determining and implementing effective engagement strategies. This is an ongoing thing. I think this dashboard that we speak of sits across all of these pillars, because it'll, you know, we're looking to find ways, regardless of the individual that's servicing our children, that they have access to what makes the most sense for them to support the student and the family. So this is kind of a, it's going to be a pretty deep process in making sure that we gather all this information. And we're trying to bring individuals in and share, and speaking of vendors, share what it is that we need, not necessarily have them come in and give us a dog-a-pony show around what they provide. So that's why this team is critical in having, so that they can really provide a deeper understanding of these areas that are missing when we're looking at. You know, I want to call it a, right now, it's an All-Star card. Now, at one point, it was a baseball card, but we'll call all of our students All-Stars, because that's what they are, and kind of give snapshots on where they are. because that's what they are and kind of give snapshots on where they are and how we can support them as we move forward. And then the goal is to expand our community centers across all of our buildings. So, you know, within, by, within the next six years, we want to have community schools living in every one of our buildings. And right now we've got six and we'll look to kind of work at, work with grants and work with Kristi Ferry and Terry on finding ways to, to gain that support. As you look at efficient systems and equitable resources, this is the pillar that Joe led prior to his transition. And I think it does speak to, again, this dashboard and having these systems, but it also speaks to everyone that's in this room and that of ELT and just trying to find ways to tighten up the systems that we do have and in listening and engaging with the community. I go back to passionate people and that's another one where the, the concerns around just professional development and that transition coming into a position, that, that's some of the things that we've adjusted already as it relates to that particular pillar, uh, because now we're providing that ongoing throughout the summer, but then also looking to support that as we transition into the school year.
I just wondered, uh, my handout doesn't have the right column that you're talking about there. And so I wonder if we can get it later.
There's two.
Is there a second one here?
Yes.
I only have one.
No.
Oh, is it underneath?
There you go.
Got two. Okay. Didn't know that.
We had one in PDF form, which would be the actual booklet, and then we did the PowerPoint that.
Yeah. Teamwork, Kathy. It's teamwork.
Gotcha. Okay. So we got this very fine print. Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. But again, working, you know, heavily with, um, our CFO, a lot of what we did just to get to transition into this particular school year with meeting with our building leaders, making sure that we're being equitable as it relates to what they need within their buildings. I think the biggest piece of this is the, you know, being efficient as we move forward because we've been rich with resources and we've done a lot of great things. And I think this dashboard also speaks to that return on investment and we want to make sure that we can start to show, because we've put so many things in place within the last three years, but start to show the connection and see the overall, um, shift in what's going on, you know, as far as the, the success of our students. Our capital project is another one, making sure that we close those on time. We meet with them weekly, um, and, you know, those are moving as, as needed, but we're also making sure that we're providing that voice to the community as we engage in each of these projects as we move forward. So this, this was just a kind of a quick snapshot for today. I mean, the goal here, you know, as our board president shared that in August, we would look to have this come to board for approval. Um, at that point, I'd love, I will make the pledge, but I'd love for us to make the pledge on our commitment to our students, our families, and our community. Um, and I know that within this particular slide, we do have a QR code that speaks to our current strategic plan and I'll be working with Karen Corona as it relates to gathering more information, but also updating that as we, as we continue this work moving forward. That concludes our presentation. Any questions?
So we'll start with Board Member Vivian.
Hi. So me and my notes, um, in regards to recruitment efforts and employee diversity, retention, employee wellness, are we opposed to maybe looking into having tenured faculty of color that are dedicated, have the right attitude, excitement about working for our district, involved in the recruitment process? It's one thing to hear about the wonders of our district from HR. It's another to hear from someone who's actually boots on the ground.
I would say yes. I think, I'm not sure if we had the conversation, but I did have that conversation with Shannon Tahoe and we would look to, gotta be creative on how we pull, but we are looking to make sure that we have staff, um, at those recruitment events that we have throughout, not only in, in, in our community, but out, as we go out to other states.
And thank you for that. Second question, with the career readiness, workforce learning that we have, I think that the work that we're already doing is incredible and I think that we are many steps ahead of neighboring districts in regards to that topic. I'm wondering if this is something that we'll consider looking into, um, expanding it to the middle school level to include things like, again, financial wellness, credit, investment, real estate. You know, you don't have to wait until you're 30 years old and recovered from amounts of debt before you purchase a home. That is possible for you much sooner if you set the right foundation for yourself early on in life.
I would say yes. We, I know that Dr. DeVries has played a key role in doing career jams at the middle and elementary. We've done the one for the high school and we will be setting up a, a monthly meeting with all of our workforce development, um, partners in the community just to see how we can build this out. But I think the big thing, as you share, is can't get to high school and not have the experience prior to high school to then really know what those dreams and goals can be. So what we've done in the last couple of years and, and having these career jams take place at the elementary and middle is now getting the wheels turning for our young ones to then kind of get a better sense of what's to come. But it's also looking to really create the city as our campus, a true city as our campus where all of our scholars go into the high school and then they are out in the community doing internships and many of those other things. So working with the mayor's office and kind of finding ways to see how we can employ our students the moment that they're able to work and then also provide them with experiences across our community. So at least it gets them exposed to what's possible. Um, and then those transitions can take place in a way where now as they transition not only from elementary to middle, they start to kind of see what experiences they want to have. And then as they get onto high school, they go right into one of our learning communities.
So, and I just thought of this as you were speaking, um, even including resume writing, that's a skill. People get paid to write resumes professionally, interviewing skills, how to sell yourself. Um, another last thing is with effective community engagement, again, I think we're light-years ahead of neighboring districts from what I've heard and from what I personally experienced, I think that we're doing an amazing job. I wanted to know what else can we do with Infinite Campus? So for example, if a family were to want to change their address and it may or may not be updated, um, either timely or at all, um, in order to help kind of mitigate confusion when it comes to search, to those things, is there a way that we can have Infinite Campus given the ability where parents can request an address change directly in Infinite Campus and upload documents in Infinite Campus? If students are able to turn in assignments, parents should be able to, you know, do the same thing with, with their address changes and the same thing with, I don't know, because I know that transportation is an outside entity, but even bus schedules on Infinite Campus. So parents always, in addition to the yellow card, so you lose the yellow card, you still have it on Infinite Campus.
Yeah, we're actually looking at, that's part of the work of the District Data Committee, that dashboard. We're looking for a vendor that can speak to the, the systems that we have. We have different systems, they, when I say speak to each other, they, they don't necessarily interconnect. So Infinite Campus is one. So is there a way to get a dashboard that connects them together and then that offers different modalities for families to update addresses, maybe get some of the control to change as, you know, sometimes they change frequently and systems are slow as it is right now. So, cause it's people dependent. So if we can get systems to speak to one another, yeah, that's the exploration that the Data Committee is leading this summer. So the hope, hopefully the answer is yes, eventually.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian. Any other questions? Vice President Nohalani?
Um, yeah, so I wanted to kind of go back to the District Data Committee and like looking at the pillars, right? So I did notice under quality instruction, this is under the student and graduate success, quality instruction and academic engagement, we talk about increasing ELA proficiency by 22%, math proficiency by 25%. When I looked through, like as we went through the slides, I didn't really see any other metrics or KPIs kind of outlined there, but I believe the goal of the District Data Committee is to align with the skin equity goals. Um, and then will this dashboard actually provide those metrics and KPIs to show us where we measure up?
They will. It's really going to be vendor-specific. We're looking for a, a company that can take the metrics and make them accessible to families and communities in a way that's not overwhelming, that's not intimidating, that is like, I don't know what this means, but then at the same time, present to our faculty and staff with that sort of that trained eye, the specific, specificities to, and we talked about ELA math, but we're also talking about chronic absenteeism. We're talking about our discipline data, things that we, we don't want to hold to ourselves. We all need to own this and be accessible to this. And that's the, that's what, why the charge of this committee is so important. So I, I will say yes, eventually I think it will get there. I think right now it's focusing on ELA and math as our primary instructional categories. And then as we explore these vendors and use the RFP process, the committee will, and again, this is all voices, will have input to say this fits what we want to do best.
Gotcha. So I'm very excited about this dashboard. Um, I deal a lot with metrics and things like that. So I guess my next question is, is, and I get it, right? Like it's going to be a process, but do we have any idea, um, how quickly or like what timeframe are we hoping to have this done?
So the ask went for, for committee membership, the ask went out to internally faculty and staff and then the community is next. The committee meets, I think, next week. Um, from there they'll develop an ask for community membership. Uh, I mean, we had, it's mid-June, it's hot. We had 60-plus staff willingly volunteered to join this committee. There's a drive, there's a passion. It was impressive. So that's the first ask, then we go to community, then we go students. So that's going to be this summer. My estimation is, and Mr. Omealy works pretty quick, uh, I'm thinking by winter of this year, we'll have RFPs out, explore vendors, and then that committee will select the vendors, be really thorough, rubric-based, very informed decision-making to align with what the voices want and need with what the system needs to get us the best product. And they're out there. They are out there. This is, we are not, uh, we are not in isolation in, in seeking this work in this system to make metrics and growth and progress quantifiable by number, but accessible and understandable to all the stakeholders of our district. So I, I would say by, you know, it's a, it's a, it's an aggressive timeline, but by like December of 2024, we'll have vendors out and maybe even one identified.
That doesn't slow down our progress though. And I think that we continue to collect the data that we do have, because this is unique. I mean, it's unique in our ask as it relates to the vendors that have been reaching out already. I mean, because everyone's kind of jumping in to see what, you know, what they can provide. But I think what we're asking them is very different than what they can provide, especially when it comes to community, given all of the connections that we have with community. And I think the, the big thing with the dashboard is also almost triangulating the data from what's going on in the classroom to what's going on in the community and then also what the involvement that that child may have in community as well. So we can connect all those dots to see how we best support each and every individual student based on their profile of kind of their overall involvement where they could be doing very well in the classroom and that's where we go, but they can be struggling in the classroom, but doing very well out in the community and engaged in, you know, having some influential individuals in their life that we want to tap to see how they can, how we can kind of partner to support them as we move forward.
So just one last thing. I know this is obviously getting ahead of ourselves. Um, I think this is great. I, I'm actually again, excited to see it and I think that like the community, the parents, right? We've heard a lot, parents wanting to know like, how are we making the improvements? How are we progressing? Um, so having that transparency, I think is going to be huge and I'm just hoping that we have like a, um, some sort of forum to actually, you know, help parents, families learn how to kind of navigate that when we get there, way ahead of ourselves.
Absolutely. We want to give access, but we don't want to give it with an assumption that you understand it. So there'll be opportunities to educate and they'll be continuous, knowing that we welcome families a new daily. So we want these systems to be accessible with regularity and with a focus on truly understanding what we're providing. Because when you have that common and that true understanding, you can better support your kids at home.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, VP. Board Member Jamaica.
I too am excited about a forward-facing dashboard, um, and any opportunity for, for parents and community members to have information for it to be accessible. I think that one of our constant challenges is accessibility for a whole bunch of stuff. Um, so while, you know, I'm like, yay, a dashboard that's going to have information, we still face that challenge of parents knowing it's there, having access to it, believing it's reliable, being able to understand it. So carry on. The, the next thing is a bit of a question, maybe an I wonder, I'm stealing it from Bernice because I really love it. We've done a really, really great job with community partners and expanding the number and diversity of groups that we work with. Um, and like it's, it's great. I love it. Whenever I hear the words RFP process or we have a survey, um, I, I think about equity and how we're reaching out and making sure that the new people that potentially are coming in, how are we reaching the folks that might not have access, right? Um, RFP processes, who you know, to, to be able to know that, hey, here's an opportunity that I could bid on this and, and be a part of this community. I'm not asking for a direct answer of detail, but just more of a, I wonder how much time is spent on ensuring that there's equity around the RFP process and ensuring that new groups and organizations that haven't been tapped already have an opportunity to be like, you know what? Yeah, I could, you're looking for, um, I don't know, civic engagement or you're looking for housing or, you know, how to do your taxes for, for kids, whatever that is. How are we ensuring that one, the existing partners we have are sharing information beyond the network we already have? Or is there some other group or organization that we can be like, hey, we're, we're looking for these new people. We don't know how to reach new people. We don't, you don't know who you don't know, right? Especially with an equity lens, ensuring that the organizations that are in this city and/or close by, right? Have an opportunity to, to come in, which the whole equity thing brings me back to the demographics as well. Whenever I see a survey, I'm like, and how does that break down? Cause it can be the largest number we've ever received, but is it as diverse as our district and is it equitable in representation of families and students? So I'm always interested in what those demographics look like and what the questions are and how they are chosen. We've had conversations as a board talking about how we do it right from the beginning. Not just we're going to put a survey out and ask people and we want people to be engaged because the problem of getting to people, but also who's deciding what those questions are and how they're asked? Because given the diversity of our district as well as its socioeconomic status, which questions we ask and how they're asked is as important as us getting 275 back. We have what, close to 10,000 students in this district. 275 is a good number. I know how hard it is to get surveys answered, but who answers? And sometimes we don't get answers because the questions are not asked in ways that translate. So I don't know if the Data Committee could possibly have a subcommittee, I'm not giving you extra work, um, could potentially have a subcommittee to look at how we ask questions? What are the questions that people want us to ask them so that we're not just, well, here's the answers and safety is number one. What does safety mean? Like safety means a lot to a lot of different people. How do we break that down in a way that's even more tangible for folks to be able to express themselves? So just a whole bunch of I wonders and looking forward to how everything goes forward.
No, I mean, I think the equity question is, is a big one. And I think that these conversations are the conversations we have to continue to have because we have built out the partnerships. And I think when we do put RFPs, we do reach out to all of our current partners and work with them to connect with others. But as I'm thinking, I'm even thinking of skin equity where there's 300 people getting that information out, but then it's making sure that we have other partners within the community to do the same. And I think on the survey end, yes, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to put together a subcommittee just for surveys, not on the dashboard, but I mean, any survey that we look to develop, just to make sure that we have the voices that need to be in that space to be more informed on how we go about asking the questions that we need to ask to the, to the community. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Any other questions to my right? Board Member Alexandra and then Board Member Vivian.
Thank you so much for the presentation of the strategic plan. I just had a comment and possibly a question on pillar number two, passionate people. Joe, you said you're going to go out, we're going out, we're going to find passionate people. And my question to you is, are we, do we have plans to be intentional about re-engaging our educators that are already in place, that have experienced some burnout, that once were passionate? Are we being intentional about their placement? Are they in a place that, in teaching something that they're passionate about? I always say, um, when you do what you're passionate about, you'll find your purpose. And I think if our teachers are aligned with where they find passion, then it will show up in how we are delivering, um, the education to our students.
Great question, Alexandra. And the answer is unequivocally yes. We are, we aren't waiting for a problem to define a reaction. We want proactivity and, and Shannon and her division have put some parameters in place that she's never been more connected with this faculty and staff as the that she's never been more connected with this faculty and staff as the hub of our personnel. And so people know, and it's changed, it's changed the image of the division. I've been in this district a long time, and HR was not always a place that felt warm and fuzzy. And Shannon has made it, you know, warm and fuzzy business and all those things, but just straight accessibility. I want to hear from you, good, bad, and the other. So that connectivity, particularly to our tenured folks that have been here for a long time, we know education is hard in general, so successes feel different here, they hit and they last for a long time, but the struggles hit too. So making sure that we have points of outreach through that department and division have never been stronger. We also highlight, we are intentional about events that highlight and recognize and say thank you, from our wellness fairs to our milestone celebrations to just extra mile service awards. The power at Liberty, five, at our face, our Family Community Engagement Center, in that main room, that lobby, the power and the emotion when you have thirty to forty individuals that are just there, because we're saying thank you, and we're giving them a certificate, and we're saying a few kind words about them, it's like no feeling you'll experience, because those adults are connected to kids, and we've charged them to make those, their kids feel like we're making them feel. So there's this connectivity of just energy that is of gratitude, respect, and we, we know it's hard, we wanna say thank you. We don't have to, but we want to, because we value you. So those, those, although I'm just giving you a few, Shannon could speak to greater details, but it's happening, and we'll continue to make sure it does, that's a great question.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Shannon, go ahead.
As part of our SFT contract, one of the beautiful things that we have in there is the ability that many of our teachers, through the reorganization process, they can actually transfer into other positions within their buildings when there's a vacancy. So what happens is, pretty much immediately starting, this year it started in April, or late April, where we allowed our teachers, we sent something out saying, here's the vacancies within our, our district, and if they're interested, based on their seniority and things like that, they can actually move positions within their, within their buildings. So it's actually, it's a really great process that allows them to find a place where they might feel more successful, and so that, and, you know, that makes, it's helpful for them too and for us, because, you know, they can, they are more passionate, I agree with you, when they're in a place that they really like to work. So that is something that we do offer our teachers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shannon.
Member Vivian?
Yes, so back to community engagement, this is something that I know I mentioned at a, I think at a policy committee meeting, but I wanted to mention it again and expound upon it just for the rest of the board members, to also hear what, what they think. In regards to the quarterly academic reports, those are very, very important, right? It's important for us to know what the data is, and it's important for the community to know what that information is. It doesn't, it's, in addition to, like, not just families, because families need to know where their students are at as a whole, and what we're doing to progress them further. Families need to know this information, but I feel like they need to be able to have that information in a way where it's maybe more plain language, right? So prior to me even being on the board and being immersed in the language of all things education, when I watched, or when I attended board meetings, and I saw the quarterly academic reports, I didn't know what you guys were talking about, and I had questions. So, and on top of that, families are busy, you have a lot of single parents, they just, maybe they can't attend, or they can't even watch. So I feel like it's important to expand or basically cast a wider net on making sure that the community as a whole has access to this information. So are we maybe considering condensing the quarterly academic report after the board meeting, and to summarize bullet points, this is where we're at with math, this is where we need to be, this is the work that we're doing to get there? So families understand, hey, we need your help too, right? And all, and also, we're also responsible to not just families as our stakeholders, but to taxpayers, right? Whether they have children in our district or not, we're responsible and beholden to them as well. So that's just a thought that I had to share about that.
That's a great thought, and the answer is, yeah, we are, we're looking to condense. You know, when you teach, I taught first grade for a long time in this district, we think of assessment in two forms, there's that summative piece, and then there's the formative piece. That summative piece is the culmination, the formative is what's happening while you get to that goal. And so that dashboard piece that we've talked about, we're looking to make that more the formative piece, so that parents get information while it's happening, ahead of that summative piece, where you're waiting for that number on the state score or the interim assessment. And, and that's what the, I think the dashboard and the district data committee, along with our professional growth and practices committee, that's constantly engaging our grading and assessment practices, yes, to better for our faculty and staff, for our students, but also to make it accessible to families in smaller chunks that are accessible along the way. And that, unequivocally, yes, we are continuing that work, we can't do it fast enough.
Vivian, I think that's a great point, because I think, no different than, than what we do at the end of a board meeting as it relates to policy, and then sharing that out, so we provide it prior on that Monday, and then once it's approved, we give some bullet points. I know that Lorinda does provide it in the quarterly report, but now kind of simplifying it so that it's something that we can put out there at the end, we can do no different than we do with our policy. And we wanna have gradual, we wanna have forward-facing, gradual, almost monthly, I mean, we're kind of sharing that before we, but we wanna kind of make sure that we're communicating not just with, not only, not only internally, but externally to our community, where we are as it relates to the work that we're doing throughout the year, so that when we do have what could be potentially an end-of-the-year report, there's monthly reports that are providing information that kind of gives you a better sense on how we got to where we were. This dashboard is gonna be amazing.
It really is, I'm excited.
Any other questions from board members?
So I'm looking at a quote from a teacher, three years plus in the district, and it's, it's, can you read it? It's about finding alternatives to suspension. How is the strategic plan putting in new programs and expanding on old ones to find just that? I'm looking through, and I see the M, sorry, the MTSS, is it a new program, or is it an improvement to an old one?
Great question, Joyce, that's the multi-tiered systems of support, the MTSS, and that's, it's an existing program that defines the three levels that we respond to student situations, whether it's instructional, maybe it's behavioral, tier one, tier two, and tier three. That, that, that defines what's in the MTSS. What we've done, Joyce, to your point, is the district data committee has now enveloped the MTSS committee that we have in the district, so that the two systems will work together, so that when we're front-facing this dashboard and putting behavioral data out, obviously in a confidential manner, but when that goes outward, we wanna make sure we have the right people looking at those trends and those numbers, so we can look at the practices around suspension and behavioral management, to see trends, is it working, is it not? Something is, is off here, what can we do differently? When we have those right people at the table as part of this committee, we'll be better able to make those decisions the right way.
Thank you.
Great question.
And Joyce, just to share, we had our administrative retreat, and MTSS was a key piece to that, because we are looking to have that become the foundation of how we move the work forward.
Is it part of the new dashboard?
It'll all be connected, it'll all be connected. And the alternative piece as well, I know that we, we're navigating some alternative options as well, as it relates to programs that are existing outside of Sken Equity, to see how we can support our students as well.
Can we get a page on the website that has all the acronyms? I mean, are you, is anyone surprised that I asked?
Be a long page, yeah, no, there's.
You can make that happen.
Something. We so often, and I've been guilty of it as well, but we know that I'm a stickler for it, we use acronyms all the time, and to Vivian's point, there's folks that are watching or that get information sent home. Policy Committee has done a damn good job of saying, we're going to make sure, at least the first time, we say the full thing with the acronym next to it, and then we can use the acronym. But that's us now going forward, and we were really intentional about it, but we don't do that everywhere, and we should, because it's one of those accessibility pieces, when people hear wah-wah-wah-wah-wah-wah, they tune out, stop listening, and say, well, obviously nobody's talking to me. So, thank you, Joyce, for reminding me.
Any other questions?
I have a few questions. Okay, so I was, I'm going to start kind of, so the strategic, and I'm, this happens in all organizations, so I'm not saying specifically Sken Equity, but we do a lot of these plans, right? How are we going to ensure that our staff as a whole understand these pillars, understand what does that mean and the role that they play? And even, and I'm assuming, and it says in there about professional development, but I'm wondering if professional development in the summer, well, not, yeah, the summertime, if there's gonna be something in the summer, or in September, October, where we can have the staff engage with the pillars?
Alignment, alignment, alignment. So the buildings are driven by their school comprehensive education plans. Those plans are rooted from this strategic plan. There is alignment between those pillars and what goes into school comprehensive education plans. That alignment is intentional, it's put in front of our administrators, who puts it in front of their building leadership teams, who puts it in front of faculty and staff. We expect buildings to know the four pillars and what they mean. Now, what we need to do a better job at, that's what this new plan addresses, is quantifying that, making the numbers stand out in a way that's understandable and of value, so we can drive improvement of those numbers. You understand, when you understand something better, you, you move it better. So, and that's, that's, that's the shift. So it, it's happening now, can we do a better job of it? Absolutely, we'll continue to put that in front of our, our building leaders, to put in front of our buildings, so that there, there is that intentional alignment.
And I have, I do have an I wonder, though, because there are so many nuances between elementary, middle, and high school, and everyone is going to have these pillars, right? And having those conversations, but the nuances are going to look very different, not even the different levels, but even the culture and climate of each school. So I'm wondering if, are we going to welcome and engage those deeper conversations around, you know, this, okay.
Absolutely, but we have fifteen dedicated faculty meeting and department days for every building. Five of those days as a district, we, I say we own, but we drive those agendas, and they will be front-loaded with everything around the pillars and the plan, and, and how we expect them to come to life in the buildings and in classrooms.
And I would also share, I mean, there's gonna be some intentionality even with ELT in being in buildings and supporting within their own respected role, and these four, these pillars will be part of those conversations. And I, I think we go back to the dashboard, but the intentionality of every member, every stakeholder in our district having access also provides that level of connection around the work that we have ahead of us, because everyone will have, I mean, the goal is for everyone, all stakeholders, even in the community, to have some level of access to the work that we're doing as a district aligned to our four pillars within the role that they have, as a parent, as a community member, as a teacher, and as we go into buildings and engage in conversation, we're gonna anchor it in these four areas. Because I moved to this slide, just college readiness and workforce learning, it's, it's the interactions that we're having even at the elementary level with our STEM programs in February and April, and starting to engage our youth around that connection, and then also having those teachers get a better understanding around what I'm, what children are learning within this week of time, should come back to building and get students to start to process these career opportunities. I mean, like, I think I mentioned before, it was a fifth grader at Kane that shared she wanted to be an engineer. When I was a fifth grader, to this day, I still don't know what an engineer is, because it's got multiple ways in which you can go in that direction, but it was just enlightening for me to hear this young lady say that, because she was working on a project that kind of had her, get a better understanding of what that looks like. So that's, we wanna make sure that these things are not sitting. I will share, the last three years, ELT came in hard and did a lot of things. This is the year that we start to bring all these things together and start to see the overlap. Not that, you know, the silos were not silos in a negative, it was just the fact that when, when Mr. Soler came in, we all came in and we put a lot of initiatives in play, a lot of support structures in play. This year, the goal is to not start to see all of what we've invested in as a board, you know, see the, the return on investment as it relates to all of what we have now. And I think from the MTSS to, to the dashboard, to the, to the strategic plan, all these things kind of overlap, and the work that we'll be doing in ELT is going to be seamless, because we'll all know that we're connected in the work moving forward.
Thank you. And then I have, I'm gonna kind of circle back to the safety, and it's similar to what you asked, actually, because we are going to be, as a board, we're going to be talking about the security screening system in the near future, and other safety measures, and school culture and climate, I'm just wondering, and it's more, I wonder, if we could get, because we do have the surveys that we're going to be looking at, that people completed with the safety, but I'm wondering if we can also, when we start having those conversations, if we can have a disaggregated information about what was stated, and, and I know it might be, what was stated, I remember going to the strategic, so I remember hearing some of that, but if we can capture that when we have the conversation, so we also have that information?
Yeah, we're currently working on that now, with our Thought Exchange, we're bringing all of those together.
You mean from the survey, the survey?
From the survey.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have that for, for all four, the Thought Exchange tool does that, and we'll have that for your discussion.
And then I'm gonna jump back to the, the data system, and this is another I wonder. So when we talked about the walkthroughs, I'm wondering, so not just the walkthroughs, and I know now there's no APR, so I know that's another conversation that's gonna happen, and what that's gonna look like when contractually, so it's an annual professional performance review, it's the evaluation, uh-huh, the evaluation that previously teachers had to go through to get, not a grade, but an assessment proficiency, et cetera, et cetera. But no longer that is occurring anymore, thanks to also the union that really fought against it. So now districts are going to be able to collectively bargain what that's going to look like moving forward. So my wonder, when you were talking about the data, that's why my eyes, my eyes were kind of over, because I'm wondering, I'm assuming that those conversations too, like, so what, how are we going to evaluate and assess and observe and do all these things with our teachers, but then still connected to the data system that we have? So why I'm, I'm asking and saying this is because, again, not Sken Equity, it could be a lot of organizations, we have this, but is it connecting with this? Is it connecting with this? And I understand that this data system is supposed to be a collection of different systems, but I'm wondering, all these other things, like the walkthrough, the new evaluation, whatever that's gonna look like, and that may not be that soon, I don't know when we're, the unions are gonna collectively bargain, but I'm wondering, again, and it might be premature, I'm just throwing it out there, is that part, is that going to be part of the conversation, to make sure that, including all the things that the board members said, that all these things are connected, so people are not feeling like, oh, we have this here, we have this here, and they're not connected?
The answer is absolutely yes. We have to connect them, otherwise, admission fatigue sets in, wonderment around, why are we doing this when we're doing this? That's the worst thing that could happen, and we have teachers that value the craft, not because of APR, but because they know what's best for our kids, they're amazing. They, we have incredibly skilled faculty and staff that are devoted to the betterment of the child, and, and not a score or a, a rating, and, and I say that without judgment. So losing that system, when you have faculty and staff that are built because of the value for the child and not the system, the system goes away, but the value stays. What we wanna avoid is the, too many systems without connectivity, and without understanding of why they exist, and I think assessment is, is key. So having this district data committee will help shape that. I, I can't really speak to the specifics, because it is a little premature, it just happened, but we've already had contact with, you know, our union leadership in our district to begin to problem-solve and adjust. So it'll happen quickly, in a good way.
Thank you, thank you. And then I just have a long-term but short-term question. When we talked about community schools there and building and expanding, my wonder is that, is that something that we should be kind of thinking about for budget season? Or are we thinking about getting grants, or all of the above?
I think a combination, I mean, we're definitely gonna be aggressive in just trying to, I mean, we, we've been doing a lot of work here in Sken Equity, and we've been recognized within the state of New York, and I think the, that department or Innovation Equity Engagement has done a lot of traveling in reference to being exposed to these different opportunities, to, just, just to then know when they go there that we're doing all those things. So I think because of that level of interaction that we've had, not just at the state level, but across the country, we're tapping into additional resources. So our ultimate goal is to tap into as many grant opportunities that we can, but we definitely wanna keep that in mind as we, as we move forward.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
I do appreciate the presentation, I think it's very rich with a lot of great information, and it captured the strategic listening tours, I mean, really well. So thank you so much for all your hard work on this, thank you, appreciate it.
And board members, again, you have an opportunity to add, or to ask additional questions at the next board meeting, and Board Member Kathy, I see your hand up.
No, I thought you were going to ask about additional comments, sorry. I was anticipating the next agenda item.
Okay, all right, so, yes, we have a second opportunity for board members to share comments.
Yes, I wanted to remind board members that we have the opportunity tomorrow at noon to listen to Robert Magna, who was the chief finance person for, in the governor's office. to listen to Robert Magna, who was the chief finance person for, in the governor's office and so on. At any rate, he's involved in looking at the new foundation aid formula that they hope to develop and board members have a chance to listen to what's being discussed and, and if there's any input to be given, that might have be the opportunity. So it's like 12 to 1:15 and you can register through the NISBA website.
And board members, it's in the updates as well. So if you can't find it, you can look in the updates that were just sent last week in addition to what Kathy said as well.
One, one more. Cause three minutes is never enough y'all. And so while I was trying to squeeze everything in, I, I want to say a special thank you to Bernice Sanoy. For the last three years, I've, I've watched how we have become more organized and intentional and it was under the leadership of both of you. And I, I very much appreciate the time, energy and effort that you put in. You've always been available and accessible and answer a question, if there is no dumb question, I thought I had a dumb question. And so I very much am looking forward to what this next year is going to look like and appreciate that we'll be able to continue the work we started underneath both of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments from board members? If there's no further business to discuss, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. May I have a motion? Thank you Board Member Jamaica. Thank you Board Member Vivian. We have plans this afternoon, that's why. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries to adjourn the meeting. Have a great evening everyone.